Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Peter, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Find your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of February 13th, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support for any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu. Aviles.
You got me?
Present.
I got you. Thank you, Councilmember. Aviles.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Present.
Bacher.
Here.
Brennan.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamarato.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Present.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
One.
Present.
Juang.
Here.
Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Father Daniel O. Kingsley of St. Clair Roman Catholic Church, which is located at 137-35 Brookfield Boulevard in Queens.
Let us bow our heads. Almighty, never-living God, Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, you have summoned men and women of diverse gifts and talents, varied hues and tongues beneath the dome of this edifice of public virtue within this storied chamber to conduct the people's business. They bring with them from every corner of our vast metropolis the hopes and dreams, the needs and concerns of every New Yorker. While the task before them is great, even greater is the heavenly grace you wish to bestow upon each and every member of this esteemed City Council. We recall how throughout the scriptures you blessed the leaders of your people. To David the king, you gave strength to oppose the giants of oppression. To Esther the queen, you gave courage to save the innocents. To Moses the lawgiver, you gave order to quell chaotic passions. To Peter the fisherman, the firmness of faith to bind and loosen. To Mary the virgin, the boldness of spirit to sing your great praises. Each of these sainted figures knew that the mantle of leadership was never in service themselves, but rather in service of truth and justice. We do well to imitate their outstanding example. Yet, we are painfully aware these days the strife that plagues our worlds, our nation, and yes, our city. Deliver us, O God, from all that wishes to tear us apart. Forge anew, O God, the bonds of charity that link us together. For this is the only way we build in New York, where the hungry are fed, the poor find shelter, the weak are defended, and the voiceless are heard. And grant us, O God, for all our days, the enduring strength to conduct the people's business, as it is right and pleasing in your sight. For indeed, we are our brothers, our sisters, keeper. And to this high calling, O God, you have called this honorable council. We ask this to our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit. God, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Selvina Brooks Powers to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you. I am so proud to introduce today Father Daniel Kingsley of St. Clair Roman Catholic Church in Rosedale, Queens. Father Kingsley is a lifelong New Yorker of Haitian and Nigerian ancestry. He was ordained a Roman Catholic priest in June of 2015, and for five years he served as a parochial vicar in Bedford-St. Martin de Porres Parish, before his 2020 appointment as administrator of Rosedale's St. Clair Church. In 2022, Father Kingsley was formally installed as the 13th pastor, becoming the first Black priest to hold the office in the church's 100-year-old history. In addition to his duties as a parish priest, Father Kingsley is the Associate Chaplain of the Rosedale Civic Association, a clergy liaison for the new 116th Police Precent, a member of the Rosedale Ecumenical Churches, and sits on the Ecumenical and Interfaith Commission of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Brooklyn. This June, Father Kingsley will celebrate his 10th anniversary of priestly ordination. Father Kingsley is accompanied today by his lovely mother Daniela Pierre and Evadelia Boyd, President, immediate past president of the Rosedale Civic Association. I make a motion to spread today's invocation on the record.
Thank you. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Alexa Aviles.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of January 23rd, 2025 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M103 DOE Capitol Plan.
Finance.
Ms. 104 and 105, former Councilmember Borelli.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M106, selections, commission, and recommendation.
Rules, privileges, and elections. Petitions and communications?
Ms. 107 and 108, minority conference.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M109, Rule 2.75b, report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed. Land use call-ups.
M110.
Thank you. We now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Bacher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Thank you. Brewer.
I accept abstaining on LU 214, Resolution 753.
Councilmember Brewer, this is land use call-ups.
Oh. Can't call-ups, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Brooks Powers.
I vote aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Madam Majority Leader, I request permission to vote on all items on the land use calendar and on all items on the general order calendar.
Permission granted.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Permission, Madam Majority Leader, to vote on all land use items and general order items. Permission granted. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you. Mamarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Majority Leader, permission to vote on all land use and general order items?
Permission granted.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
I vote aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Permission to vote on all land use items and general orders items?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all. And while I have real concerns about the process relating to the land use action on First Avenue, the merits of the process.
Councilmember, you're solely allowed to cast your vote. No explanations.
Well, then I'll just vote aye, and I'll move on. Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I vote aye, and I just want to say welcome to I Mentor and Infotech High School.
Councilmember, this is for general discussion. This is solely if you're going to explain your vote on a land use items. Thank you.
Juang.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Mealy, land use call-ups.
I vote aye on all.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader. Before we begin, I want to note that there will be CART and American Sign Language services provided at today's stated meeting to ensure those who are hard of hearing are accommodated. Just two weeks into the second Trump presidency, we have already seen chaos created, and unprecedented attacks being threatened upon our city and working families throughout the nation. The actions of the Trump administration have undermined the health and safety of Americans, violated the Constitution, and weakened national security. None of this does anything to help working families or make their lives more affordable. Each day, this new administration is actively upending the rule of law. Just as it pardoned those who rioted and assaulted law enforcement officers at the Capitol on January 6th, this week we saw the Justice Department issue an unprecedented letter that meddles in the federal criminal case against the mayor. This letter is a political weapon aimed at New York City and corruptly interferes in the legal process. It seems overtly intended to serve as a continued instrument of blackmail against our city's mayor, to serve as an arm of the Trump administration. It blatantly states what it expects of the mayor and leaves the perpetual threat of his criminal case to force his compliance. This leaves the mayor of our city compromised, and we know the intentions of the Trump administration. This is bad for New York City and bad for New Yorkers. New York City needs strong leadership that is committed to upholding the values of our city and protecting its families and communities from the extremism of this presidential administration. This week alone, we've seen many attacks on our city and state from the Trump administration. Elon Musk, the wealthiest person in the world, who nobody voted for, by the way, but has been working to take away resources from everyday Americans that this individual can't even relate to, directed the administration to unjustly take federal funding that was already allocated away from our city. At the same time that the Justice Department is blackmailing our mayor, it is also threatening to attack our city by taking away funding for local law enforcement and crime victims. This situation is unsustainable, and the city's leaders, from Congress to state and city governments, must determine a viable path forward for our city that is committed to protecting New Yorkers. From childcare and public schools to healthcare and public safety, there is so much at stake right now, with an unhinged presidential administration comfortable with creating chaos. For the people of our city, they count on their city, state, and federal governments, and it is more critical than ever for us to step up with strong local democracy in the face of increasing tyranny. This month, we lost four New Yorkers to fatal fires, including residents in the districts of Councilmember Rivera, Brennan, and Felice. Our hearts are with their neighbors and loved ones, and we wish a speedy recovery for those who were injured in those fires. I also want to take a moment to remember the lives of all those who were killed during the tragic air collision on January 29th in Washington, DC. We mourn the death of 60 passengers and four crew members from American Airlines, and three crew members in the Black Hawk helicopter, including several who grew up right here in our city. The pilot of the American Airlines flight, 34-year-old Jonathan Campos, grew up in Brooklyn. Dinesha Brown Elder, one of the flight attendants, grew up in Coney Island. And 28-year-old Melissa Jane Nekandri was a city resident living in Brooklyn who was traveling on a work trip. Our thoughts are certainly with their family and loved ones. May they all rest in peace. Colleagues, it is Black History Month. This month and every month, it is important that we proudly lift up our full history for all to understand. We're in a period when too many are seeking to erase and disregard the history of so many in this country. We won't allow that to happen. We know. Black history is American history, full of the brilliance of people whose contributions have shaped our city, country, and the world for the better. We will honor our ancestors, whose shoulders we stand on, and celebrate our rich legacy with great pride and joy. The council is hosting its Black History Month celebration in chambers on Monday, February 24th, and I invite everyone to join us. February is also American Heart Month, a time when we raise awareness about the impact of heart disease, which has been the leading cause of death in the United States since 1950. Today, we wear red ribbons in honor of National Heart Day, which is observed on the first Friday in February. It remains critical that we work together to promote greater heart health and work towards preventing cardiovascular diseases. We also recognized World Hijab Day on February 1st in honor of New Yorkers and millions of people around the world who wear the hijab with pride. February 7th was National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. This reminds us of the persistent disparities that continue to impact Black communities and of the importance of HIV prevention, testing, and treatment. It will take all of us to confront the stigma and inequities in our communities. Yesterday was NAACP Day in celebration of the day that the NAACP was formed in 1909. I am proud to be a longstanding member of the NAACP because we would not be here today without the work and advocacy of the oldest civil rights organization in the country. Tomorrow is National Donor Day, a time to spread awareness and education about organ, eye, and tissue donations. These vital donations make it possible for others to have a second chance at life, and we thank all donors for their generosity. Saturday, February 15th, is National Black Girl Magic Day. The council is proud to host a Black Girl Magic Day celebration tonight, right here in council chambers. I thank you to my colleagues who are co-sponsoring this fun celebration. February 17th will be Kosovo Independence Day. The council hosted a Kosovo Independence celebration last night, and I thank all of my colleagues who hosted this celebratory event. Finally, I want to give a shout out to the high school students from I Mentor NYC who are observing our stated meeting today. Thank you all for being here in the people's house. Woo! Woo! Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land. Oh, I want to give some time to our new minority leader. I want to give her a few moments of speaking time. Our new minority leader, Councilmember Joanne Ariola.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maggie. She doesn't slip, huh? You never know. Thank you, Madam Speaker Adams, Majority Leader Farias, Majority Whip Brooks Powers, and my fellow colleagues. It is my honor to stand here today as the newly-elected Republican Minority Leader of the City Council, aside my friend and colleague and Minority Whip, Councilmember Vicky Palladino. As the council's minority leader, it is my intention to lead, holding true to my belief in standing for our ground when we must and finding common ground when we can. As a member of this body and council member in the 32nd Council District, I have been able to successfully serve the people of my district, providing them with answers to their questions and concerns and holding the city's agencies accountable. That success was not achieved alone. It is due to the hard work and dedication of some of the special people who are here with me today. I'd like to take a moment to introduce you to my amazing staff. Our constituent liaisons, Stacy Spataro, Linda Fogel, Alex Leguziamo, and Margaret Powers. Our office manager, Jessica Jenna. Our budget director, Kira Donley. My chief of staff and special advisor to the minority leader, the one and only Felice Inserillo. The executive director of the Minority Leaders' Office, Peter Spencer. And the deputy executive director of the Minority Leaders' Office, Michael Strasberg. Our amazing communications director, Ray Van, isn't here with us today because he's a new dad, and he's home with his wife and his beautiful baby boy. We miss him. As my office and I continue to serve the district, I will now also have a unique opportunity to share the concerns of all New Yorkers who share the same values and concerns about our city. It is so important to me that every voice of everyday New Yorker is heard. As the Republican leader of a group of five, we may seem small, but our dedication to advocacy is unmatched. Together, we have been a voice of reason, common sense, and solutions here at City Hall and in our districts. Each of us has brought a unique style of accomplishments we have achieved in our districts and in this city. The newly-appointed Minority Whip, Councilmember Vicky Palladino, has used her strong voice to hold agencies accountable and has been a champion of homeowners who have had their homes taken over by squatters. Our newest member, Councilwoman Kristi Mamarato, dove right in to make much-needed changes to our district that now, for the first time in 50 years, has Republican representation. Councilwoman Ina Vernikov has been at the forefront of the fight against the growing antisemitism in our city and in the world. And Councilmember David Carr has spearheaded efforts to reform our property tax system and pass legislation that provides a more forgiving interest rate for homeowners and arrears. My solution-oriented approach to this work has led to bipartisan passing of legislation, making the DOT more transparent to our communities and to the creation of the mayor's Office of Marine Debris Removal and Vessel Surrendering to keep the water and shoreline surrounding our city cleaner than ever before. When parents were concerned about the safety of our schools, we got together and demanded the New York City Department of Education install doorbells and lock the front doors of our schools to keep our children safe from harm. We are now in the final stages of those installations. We've advocated for our city workers who were unjustly fired for not just wanting to take a brand-new vaccine after they had served this city at the height of a pandemic with little to no PPE, and we fought to get 100 of those workers back to their positions. And I will not stop until each and every one has returned to their job. Many of them are here with us today, and I applaud them for their integrity and willingness to hold the line for thousands of others who have been wrongfully taken from serving our city. As I begin my tenure as minority leader, I look forward to engaging conversations with all of you here at the council. I know that there is much we do not agree on, but I think there is so much more that we can agree on through meaningful dialogue. I have heard people say that as a Republican, it's hard to make headway or affect change, but I'm happy to report that's definitely not the case. Our delegation is affecting change that matters. We are righting the wrongs, fighting hard, and holding our ground, finding solutions, and navigating our way through one of the city's most trying periods while looking ahead to a brighter future for the city we all love. I'd like to now thank my predecessor minority leader, former minority leader Joseph Borelli, and I appreciate the letter he left me that was very, very touching and encouraging. And he said, "I know you're going to hit home runs." I'm blessed to have achieved much in both my private life and in my professional, and that is only by the grace and glory of the God who guides every step I take. I would like to close with a prayer for all of us. May God grant us the wisdom of Solomon, the courage to lead with integrity, and the strength to serve this city with compassion. Thank you, and amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. 1220340. residential units, at least 25% of which will be affordable under MIH, and new ground-floor retail space in the College Point neighborhood of Councilmember Palladino's district. 43-39 Van Damme Street demapping and application to amend the city map to eliminate an unbuilt portion of Gale Avenue to facilitate the development of an outdoor dining area in Councilmember One's district. The Council will be voting on a resolution to disapprove this application. 2185 Coil Street will facilitate the development of a new nine-story mixed-use building with ground-floor commercial space and over 400 housing units, 25% of which will be affordable under MIH Option 1, in the Sheepshead Bay neighborhood of Councilmember Narcissus's district. The Council is modifying the application to ensure that the height permitted by the zoning more closely reflects the height of the proposed development and to establish MIH Option 1 and the deep affordability option as the available MIH options. 438 Concord Avenue rezoning will facilitate the development of a 10-story mixed-use building with manufacturing space, commercial space, community facility space, and 43 parking spots in the Deputy Speaker's district—uh, Deputy Speaker Ayala. The Council is modifying the application to require MIH Option 1 and the deep affordability option as the available MIH options. Landmark designation for the Jacob Day residence, a three-story Greek Revival-style house in Councilmember Rivera's district. From 1857 to 1884, it was used as a home and place of business by Jacob Day, an advocate for the abolition of slavery and the successful owner of a catering company at a time when Black men had limited business opportunities. 455 First Avenue rezoning, an application to facilitate the development of a new commercial life sciences building in the Kips Bay neighborhood in Councilmember Rivera's district. The project is on the current site of the New York City Public Health Laboratory, which will be moving into a new building at the Harlem Hospital Center. And Spark Kips Bay, an application to facilitate the redevelopment of the Hunter College Brookdale Campus into a state-of-the-art life sciences campus in Councilmember Powers' district. The proposal will also facilitate the demolition and reconstruction of a pedestrian bridge over the FDR Drive, which will connect the Waterside Plaza with the campus's open space and convert the bridge to be ADA compliant. Next, we will vote on the following finance items: A resolution to approve a budget modification pursuant to the New York City Charter; a transparency resolution approving the new designation and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget; a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for four lots in Councilmember Sanchez's district; and a pre-considered resolution also sponsored by Councilmember Brannan establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for four lots in Councilmembers Oswald, Felice, and Althea Stevens' districts. Today, pursuant to Council Rule 2.75B in relation to complaints of sexual harassment as defined by the Council's anti-discrimination and harassment policy, the required annual report will be submitted. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 138A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, would require the establishment of a program to provide public service announcements in American Sign Language with accompanying captions for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. These announcements would be displays on advertising structures such as Link NYC kiosks. Introduction 646A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would expand the reporting requirements for the implementation of Next Generation 911, a system that allows for the transfer of digital information from the public to the city's 911 system. Thank you to our staff members Irene Beihofsky, Eric Brown, and Brad Reed. Introduction 432, sponsored by Councilmember Perion Sanchez, would require the Department of Education, in consultation with the Department of Youth and Community Development, to distribute information about after-school programs to students. Introduction 1057A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the DOE to issue an annual report on journalism courses and clubs and student publications available at each DOE high school during the previous school year. High schools would also be required to distribute information to students regarding the availability of journalism clubs and student publications at the beginning of the school year. We thank our staff member Nadia Jean-François. Introduction 552A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan, would require the Department of Transportation to coordinate with all relevant entities, including utility companies, when performing resurfacing work. It would also require DOT to complete resurfacing work within 15 business days after the completion of milling work where practicable. If the work cannot be done within this time, DOT would be required to post a notice on its website and provide email notice to the affected community board explaining why additional time is needed and the new expected date of completion. And Introduction 1160A, sponsored by Councilmember Brannan, DOT to ensure that all pavement markings or temporary markings are installed on a street within five days, five business days after the street is resurfaced. We thank our staff members Mark Chen, Kevin Kotowski, John Basile, and Elliot Heisler. Next, we're voting on two bills that stem from my 2024 State of the City address to strengthen deed theft prevention. In our neighborhoods, particularly those with significant rates of Black and Latino homeownership, deed theft has become an increasing issue. These predatory schemes threaten the loss of prized assets and transfer of hard-earned generational wealth within families already disproportionately affected by racial wealth gaps. As part of ongoing efforts to prevent deed theft, the Council has collaborated with local law schools and pro bono attorneys to provide free estate planning resources to New Yorkers in all five boroughs. Today, we're proud to pass these bills to build on our efforts to prioritize and protect homeownership. Introduction 901A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would require the Office of the Homeowner Advocate to consult with the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to provide support, including financial planning, mortgage counseling, and scam prevention and counseling to homeowners and their heirs in order to protect their assets. Introduction 888A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require that when a purchaser submits an order to buy certain residential property that the owner has not listed for sale, is not actively selling, or did not intend to sell, the purchaser must disclose in writing, in a clear and conspicuous manner, the estimated market value of the residential property. Any purchaser who violates this law is liable for a civil penalty of up to $500 for the first violation and up to $1,000 for a subsequent violation. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cordero, Natalie Melso, and Sarah Sway. Finally, we'll vote on a pair of bills with the goal of improving the Department of Corrections' response to sexual violence in the city's jails so that staff and those who are detained are better protected. Over 700 women alleged sexual abuse at Rikers Island last March, and over 100 new lawsuits have been filed in recent weeks alleging such abuse in juvenile jails citywide. At the same time, correction officers and jail staff at Rikers have reported sexual violence and harassment, particularly towards women officers, but DOC does not publicly report on these incidents or investigations into them. These bills seek to improve DOC's response to these incidents that harm staff and those in custody. Introduction 792A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would require the Department of Correction to use an electronic case management system to track investigations of sexual abuse so there is up-to-date and accurate information and more methodical tracking. And Introduction 735B, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require the Department of Correction to report annually on alleged incidents of sexual violence and harassment of DOC and correctional health services staff by incarcerated individuals or other staff that occurred in the previous year. The DOC Commissioner would also be required to report annually on the DOC's investigations of these incidents. Additionally, the Commissioner would be required to ensure staff have access to mental health treatment resources and to publicize available resources. We thank our staff members Natalie Melso, Jeremy Whiteman, and Josh Kingsley. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd first like to recognize Council member Sanchez, followed by Riley, then Rivera.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, the Council is making strides to make sure nearly 1 million young people in our schools can access the opportunities that allow them to become the fullest versions of themselves. Intro 432 requires the Department of Education in consultation with the Department of Youth and Community Development to distribute information about after-school programs to families at every public K through 12, elementary, middle, and high school. This will be available via the main office, email, on the school's website, and any online portal for students and their families. Starting this fall, it will be easier than ever for students to access the resources that they need to thrive. So I hope my colleagues will join me in voting aye on this bill today. And I want to especially congratulate my team members who aged this bill on our team's behalf, my Acting Chief, Maria Villalobos, Ben Ratner, Gerard Fernandez, Carla Dominguez, and of course, our Committee Counsel, Nadia Jean-François. Thank you so much.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Rivera, then Stevens.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, as the prime sponsor of Intro 646 and the Text to 911 Bill, Intro 901, the Property Assistance Protection Bill of homeowners and their heirs, I urge my colleagues to join me in voting to pass these critical pieces of legislation. These bills are more than policy. They are necessary solutions to longstanding gaps in our city's emergency response and homeowner support systems. Intro 646 will modernize our emergency services by ensuring that individuals who are deaf, hard of hearing, or deaf-blind can communicate during a crisis. By requiring outreach to hire experts in accessibilities and disability services, we are making it clear that New York City prioritizes the safety of all its residents. No one should be left without a way to call for help when every second counts. Meanwhile, Intro 901 would strengthen protection for homeowners and their heirs by ensuring that they have access to mortgage counseling, financial planning, and scam prevention resources. Homeownership is one of the most powerful tools for building generational wealth, and this bill will keep families in their homes and our communities stable. These bills are about equity, accessibility, and protecting the most vulnerable New Yorkers amongst us. Today's vote is an opportunity to take real action that will improve lives across our city. I urge my colleagues to stay with me and pass these measures today, and I also want to thank my colleagues, community staff, and tireless advocates who have fought to make these bills a reality. Let's get this done for the people of New York City. Thank you, Majority Leader.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rivera, followed by Stevens, then Majority Whip Brooks-Powers.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. Today, we're voting on Introduction 792, which will require the Department of Corrections to implement an electronic case management system to track investigations of sexual abuse against both staff and incarcerated individuals, as well as two land use items in my district. Over my tenure here as former member and Chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, and certainly at our hearing on Introduction 792 under the leadership of Chair Nurse, we have heard from survivors of sexual violence in New York City-operated jails how clear the need is for greater oversight to ensure that investigations are actually completed within 90 days as mandated by local and federal policy. According to a report from Gothamis, more than 45% of the department's investigations into sexual violence drag on well past 90 days. The history of sexual abuse allegations at Rikers Island, combined with a lack of meaningful oversight, has allowed perpetrators to operate with impunity. And when sexual abuse allegations are delayed or ignored, it sends a message that such crimes are tolerated, perpetuating a cycle of violence. Survivors deserve to know that their cases are being taken seriously and handled in a timely manner. A modern electronic case management system would provide streamlined, secure way to track reports, ensure accountability, and prevent cases from languishing without resolution. I encourage my colleagues to vote aye. Additionally, we are voting on 455 First Avenue in the Kips Bay area that's becoming a hub for the life sciences sector. Innovation East is a transformative project. It will deliver meaningful benefits to our community that includes improvements, infrastructure upgrades, street safety improvements, and better access to science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics opportunities. I want to thank EDC, the Development Team, my staff, and Community Board Six for creating this—these state-of-the-art facilities that are going to provide educational and workforce development support for local residents and students. I'm also excited for the Jacob Day residence. It has a significant historical impact as a center for Black civic life, and I want to thank my colleagues for their support.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens, followed by Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, and then Councilmember Hudson.
Good afternoon, everyone, and happy Black History Month. Yes, it is Black History Month, and we do celebrate it in the Council. I'm honored to be here today to take this important step towards with the patches of 735, which will require the Department of Corrections to report on incidents of sexual assault and harassment against correctional staff and ensure that they have access to critical mental health resources. This legislation is about accountability, protection, and compassion. Correctional staff put their life on the line every day, and they deserve to work in an environment that prioritizes their well-being. With this bill, we are making it clear that their experience matters, their safety matters, and their mental health matters. Too often, we focus on accountability without ensuring that people have the tools and resources to heal, but healing is essential for progress as individuals across the city need. If we truly want to build a more just and equitable society, we must invest in policies that protect people while also providing them with the care that they need to move forward. With the strong support of City Council, this legislation reflects our shared commitment to just dignity and humanity, and it sends a powerful message, not just to correctional staff, but to workers across the city. No one should have to endure harassment or violence in the workplace. Everyone deserves to feel safe, valued, and respected. Thank you to our Speaker and all of my colleagues, and I've asked all of you to vote aye on this legislation today, and thank you. And see you all at Black Girl Magic tonight.
Recognizing Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, followed by Councilmembers Hudson, Powers, and Joseph.
Thank you. Today, I'm proud that the Council will vote on Intro 138, ensuring that our deaf and hard-of-hearing neighbors are fully included in the city's public communication and emergency services. I want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership and Chair Gutierrez for her partnership in advancing this critical legislation. Accessibility is not optional, it is essential. Every New Yorker, regardless of ability, deserves equal access to important public information and emergency resources. While progress has been made, many in the deaf and hard-hearing community are still unaware of services like Text to 911 and video relay services. This bill ensures that these resources are prominently promoted through public service announcements on Link NYC kiosks, featuring American Sign Language and captions to make information truly accessible. Beyond raising awareness, this effort reinforces a simple but powerful message: New York City is committed to inclusion. By ensuring that public messaging reaches all communities, we are building a safer, more connected, and more equitable city. I am deeply grateful to the advocates and stakeholders who have pushed for these necessary changes. Together, we are making meaningful progress towards a more inclusive future. I urge my colleagues to support Intro 138. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Powers and Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon. Today, I would like to briefly discuss my bill, Intro 888, which the Council is voting on today. As our city's housing crisis deepens, longtime homeowners, particularly in rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods, are being targeted by predatory real estate practices. These schemes disproportionately impact Black and Brown communities and older adults. Unsolicited housing offers, often dangling quick cash, exploit asset-rich and cash-poor people, especially older adults on fixed incomes. These homeowners are pressured into selling far below market value, ultimately losing their most valuable asset, their home. Intro 888 takes a critical step to protect homeowners from these bad actors. The bill would require purchasers making unsolicited offers on certain residential properties to disclose in writing the estimated market value of the home. This ensures homeowners have the necessary information to make informed decisions. Violators of this law would face civil penalties, and property owners would have the right to take legal action. This is a simple, common-sense measure to safeguard longtime homeowners from exploitation. I urge my colleagues to take this meaningful action to protect New Yorkers from fraudulent real estate schemes and help ensure they can remain in their homes and communities by voting aye on Intro 888. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Powers, followed by Joseph.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, and thank you, everyone. We'll be voting today on a big project coming to Kips Bay, the Science Park and Research Campus we call Spark, a life sciences project in my district at Kips Bay, a project that presents a tremendous opportunity for both my district and the entire city to be on the cutting edge in the life science industry while further investing in our education institutions. The project is meant to replace a dilapidated Brookdale Campus on 25th Street with new CUNY facilities, a new high school, public health infrastructure, and new space to continue growing development in life sciences. When I took off office, there was a proposal here that the community deeply opposed to, so now, years later, we have a proposal to bolster the healthcare and life sciences industry already in that area and investing in education. As part of it, we're getting a brand-new high school, a new STEAM center in Manhattan, the first for our borough, the third citywide, and three new CUNY campuses serving— already in that area and investing in education. As part of it, we're getting a brand-new high school, a new STEAM center in Manhattan, the first for our borough, the third citywide, and three new CUNY campuses serving Hunter College BMCC and the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. We're getting a net increase in available CUNY dorms in Midtown and on the Upper East Side, new nonprofit programming in the local schools, and expansion of 3K seats in the zip code nearby, a new state-of-the-art facility for the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, a new H&amp;H Ambulatory Care and Wellness Center for Bellevue, a whole new acre of enhanced public realm space, and a new park across the street. We're converting a private parking lot on city-owned land to a brand-new waterfront park on 34th Street, a brand-new and newly-accessible pedestrian bridge for the folks that live in Waterside Plaza, an investment in Solar One and nearby nonprofit in Stuyvesant Cove Park, a new search for affordable housing in this neighborhood, partnering with my colleague across the street, Councilmember Rivera. And last but not least, 15,000 new jobs, 12,000 construction jobs, and over 3,000 permanent jobs. But maybe importantly, educational opportunities to connect to those jobs. I want to thank the entire EDC team. I want to thank the Council Land Use and Planning Division, and I want to thank Pat and Ben from my office. I'm so excited about this project, and I urge everyone to vote aye. Thanks so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon. Today is a proud day for student journalism in New York City. With the passage of Intro 1057, a reporting bill requiring the Department of Education to issue an annual report detailing which schools offer journalism courses, student publication, and journalism clubs. Here in New York City, we're taking a major step toward in expanding access to journalism courses, clubs, and student publications across our public high schools. As a forever educator, I've seen firsthand the power of student journalism. It teaches young people to think critically, ask tough questions, and engage with the world around them. A free and thriving press is fundamental to our democracy, and that foundation starts in our classrooms. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to Youth Journalism Coalition, who are here in the chambers with us today. Your tireless advocacy, your passion, and your belief in the power of student voices have been instrumental in making this legislation a reality. Because of your work, more students across this city will have the opportunity to develop their skills and their stories and participate in the essential work of journalism. On another note, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the students from iMentor NYC who are visiting with us today. iMentor has been doing incredible work since 1999, helping high school juniors and seniors navigate their educational journey, particularly in Title I schools. The program impact speaks for itself. 81% of iMentor students enroll in college, and they are 30% more likely to complete their college degrees than their peers. That is the power of mentorship. I want to acknowledge the executive director, Scott Milstein, and the 12 students from Information Technology High School, and my colleagues, Councilmember Wong's district, who are here today to learn more about how their government works. To all of you, thank you for being here, and I hope today inspires you to stay engaged and involved in shaping the future of our city. The passage of Intro 1057 is a testament of what is possible when young people advocate, policymakers come together for a common cause. Let's continue to invest in our students, uplift their voice, and ensure that every young person in New York City has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, great. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intros 888A and 901A, deed theft protections and homeowner support.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intros 735B and 792A, reporting of sexual abuse and harassment in city jails.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intros 432A and 1057A, after-school and student journalism programs.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered Reso 732, transparency resolution.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 232 and Reso 749, and pre-considered LU 233 and Reso 750, tax exemptions.
coupled on general orders.
M100 and Reso 751, budget modification.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 207 and Reso 752, Jacob Day residents.
coupled on general orders.
LU 208 through 213, various applications.
approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 1970 of the New York City Charter.
Excuse me, LU 214 and Reso 753 through LU 216 and Reso 755, 455 First Avenue.
coupled on general orders.
LU 217 and Reso 756 through LU 224 and Reso 763, Spark, Kips Bay.
coupled on general orders.
LU 229 and Reso 764 and LU 230 and Reso 765, 12203 14th Avenue rezoning.
coupled on general orders.
LU 231 and Reso 766, 4939 Van Damme Street, demapping.
motion to disapprove.
Report of the Committee on Technology, Intro 138A, public service announcements in American Sign Language.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 646A, next generation 911.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intros 552A and 1160A, street resurfacing and pavement markings.
amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 208 and Reso 767, and LU 209 and Reso 768, 2185 Coil Street.
coupled on general orders.
LU 210 and Reso 769 and LU 211 and Reso 770, 438 Concord Avenue.
coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner of De-
coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye and all except LU 214 and Resolution 753, LU 215 and Resolution 754, and LU 216 and Resolution 755. I'm abstaining on those.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. One moment. Brooks Powers.
Aye and all. I'd like to congratulate everyone passing the bill today.
Sorry, thank you. Caban.
Aye and all.
Carr.
No one pre-considered Resolution 732, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye and all.
Dinowitz.
Aye and all.
Feliz.
Aye and all.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Aye and all.
Holden.
Aye and all, with the exception of Resolution 732, which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye and all.
Joseph.
Aye and all.
Krishnan.
Aye and all.
Lee.
Aye and all.
Lewis.
Aye and all.
Thank you. Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Reso 732. I vote no.
Thank you. Marte.
Aye.
Meili.
Aye and all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye, and I just want to give appreciation to Councilmember Rivera and Stevens on their two bills. I know they're reporting bills and a measure for electronic management system to track sexual assault and violence, but, you know, Councilmember Rivera has done a lot of work to advance that issue in the Criminal Justice Committee, and Councilmember Stevens has been a real great partner on holding the city accountable for the over 500 cases of sexual assault that have been filed by people who were violated while they were in our youth juvenile facilities, and also for the 700 people who were violated in our city jails, with no formal apology from our city. So thank you for advancing these bills. I vote aye and all.
Thank you. Ose.
I vote aye and all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Reso 732, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye and all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission, Councilor.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today's vote includes an approval of an Article 11 exemption that will help finance gut renovations in five sites in my district, preserving 173 units of affordable housing for decades to come, with more than 80% set aside for deeply affordable housing and housing for formerly homeless individuals. For some context, for many years, these buildings were part of the notorious Cluster Site approach to housing families experiencing homelessness. These sites were run by negligent landlords who exploited their tenants for maximum profit until they were purchased by the de Blasio administration in 2021. They were being run into the ground. This is the reason why the scope of work here is a total gut rehab. As the rehabilitation work progresses, my office will receive regular updates from the development team on rehab status, but I wanted to point out that this is an example of something that we want to do citywide. Citywide, it is essential that we devise a long-term solution for New York City's most distressed buildings, which my legislation, the Housing Rescue and Resident Protection Act, Intro 1063, does. 1063 is an overhaul of the program previously known as a third-party transfer program, and I encourage my colleagues to sign on in order to give New York City its most powerful tool to hold the worst landlords accountable. I want to thank Arvin from HPD for answering all our questions on this Article 11, Josh Stevenson from West Bronx Housing, and of course, Neighborhood Restore MBD, Mid Bronx Desperados, and my team members, Ben Ratner and Gerard Fernandez, for their work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye and all.
Ung.
Aye and all.
Vernikov.
Aye and all, except no on Reso 732.
Williams.
I vote aye and all.
One.
Aye and all.
Juang.
Aye and all.
Areola.
No one pre-considered Reso 732, and aye on all the rest.
Farias.
I vote aye and all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye and all, with particular thanks to Councilmembers Rivera and Stevens on the two DOC bills. Long time coming. Congratulations.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of LU's 214, 215, 216 and accompanying resolutions, which were adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention, and Resolution 732, which was adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, six in the negative, and zero abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. There are no resolutions on today's calendar, so we will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Shulman, followed by Banks, then Salam.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing pre-considered intro number 1194, which would update the eligibility language for HSA services to include any person with HIV, which will expand current coverage. It is important to recognize the immense progress that has been made over the years in addressing the HIV/AIDS epidemic. It is equally essential to acknowledge that this progress is fragile and requires sustained commitment. The federal government plays a central role in funding HIV/AIDS services through programs like the Ryan White HIV/AIDS Program, and it is unclear how reliable these funding sources will be in the future. HSA has been a lifeline- sorry. HSA has been a lifeline for thousands of New Yorkers living with HIV and AIDS. It provides critical services from housing assistance to medical care and case management, ensuring that individuals can live with dignity, respect, and access to the treatment they deserve. The HIV/AIDS crisis is far from over, and as long as New Yorkers continue to live with HIV and grow older, we must continue to support them with a robust and reliable response. So please join me in sponsoring this important legislation. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks, followed by Salam, then Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce two resolutions that aim to uplift and promote the voices and lived experience of public housing residents on the RAD PAC conversions. Resolution 730 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass legislation to conduct a comprehensive study of the impacts of the RAD PAC program on tenant rights, security, community well-being. While this program was designed to revitalize public housing, residents have reported increased rents, high eviction rates, unresolved maintenance issues, and deteriorating living conditions. A thorough study is essential to understand these impacts and ensure that tenant protections remain a top priority. Resolution 731 calls on the state legislature to implement a more robust resident engagement and voting process at each NYCHA development, considering RAD PAC conversion. There is a lack of engagement, education, and transparency from both NYCHA and the new private management companies surrounding the conversion decision and process. Our public housing residents deserve a process that gives them a real meaningful voice in decisions that have an immense impact on their homes and communities. These resolutions are crucial in advocating for our city's public housing residents. Together, these resolutions will help create a system where the voices of NYCHA residents are not just heard, but prioritized in shaping the future of their homes. This legislation is especially timed as the number of NYCHA apartment units converting to PAC is expected to increase, with NYCHA's stated goal being the inclusion of 62,000 apartments into the PAC program by 2028. As Chair of the Public Housing Committee, I urge all my colleagues to stand with me and support these resolutions. I want to thank Councilmembers Wong, Hanks, Ayala, Narcisse, and Brooks Powers for their support on these resolutions. I look forward to continuing to work together in prioritizing the voices of public housing residents in New York City. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam, followed by Brewer, then Rivera, and Schwang.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for your remarks. Far too often, homeowners, especially middle-class families, find themselves facing construction-related violations without even knowing that a permit was required for the work being done on their property. When safety issues arise because of these unknowns, tenants often face life-endangering consequences. Introduction 1193-2025 seeks to change that by requiring contractors to provide clear written notice to homeowners about the necessary permits for a project, the process for obtaining them, and how to verify their compliance before any work begins. This legislation will help protect homeowners from predatory contractors, protect tenants from unsafe structures, ensure work is being done by licensed professionals, and ultimately strengthen the integrity and safety of our city's infrastructure. By increasing transparency and accountability, we are safeguarding our homes, empowering homeowners to make informed decisions and their properties for the benefit of their tenants, and ensuring jobs are being created for licensed professionals who are often unionized. I'm also introducing two resolutions today, Resolution 0743 and Resolution 0742. The first is in support of the Earned Time Act, which expands merit-based time credits for incarcerated individuals who engage in education. Incarcerated individuals who engage in vocational training and rehabilitation programs as well, helping to lower recidivism and provide pathways for successful reentry. The second is in support of the Mayfield Act, which eliminates mandatory minimum sentences and restores judicial discretion in sentencing, ensuring that justice is fair, not dictated by rigid laws, and have disproportionately harmed Black and Brown communities. I want to also thank, as I wrap, I just want to also thank my legislative director, Mufaz Wu Seif, whose tireless dedication in the city council's legislative and staff, and for the invaluable assistance, and for my colleagues who have already expressed their support for these measures. I urge all of my colleagues to support these efforts as we work towards a safer, fairer, more just New York. Thanks.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Rivera, then Schwang, and the Majority Whip, Brooks Powers.
Thank you very much. I'm supporting Intro 734, Prison Safety is Public Safety, Robert Brooks, Transparency and Accountability. It's a legislative package in Albany introduced by State Senator Julia Salazar, and I want to thank the governor for her strong response to the murder of Mr. Brooks and her intention to work with the legislature on reforms. These bills create the framework. One would authorize the commissioner to fire officers for violence and serious misconduct. Now, the decision to terminate is made by an outside arbitrator selected by the Correction Officers Union. Also- Also, another bill would establish the Office of Correctional Ombudsman. Another bill would strengthen the Correctional Association of New York. Currently, staff can't even enter a prison for inspection without giving seventy-two hours' notice. I also want to say this hopefully is a catalyst for change, and I want to thank Mr. Robert Ricks, the father, for making this a priority, for making sure that the prisons are run in a way that is fair to everybody. We do need also a special prosecutor.
Recognizing Councilmember Rivera, followed by Zhuang, and then Majority Whip, Brooks Powers.
Thank you. Today I'm introducing a resolution celebrating the extraordinary life and contributions of Judith Jameson, the renowned dancer, choreographer, and former artistic director of the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater, who passed away on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the age of eighty-one. The resolution designates May tenth annually as Judith Jameson Day in New York City. Commemorating her profound influence on dance and culture, Judith Jameson was a visionary artist and leader who left an indelible mark on our city and the world. Her commitment to excellence raised a new generation of brilliant artists and elevated modern dance to new heights. I encourage you to sign on in support, and I want to thank my team and committee staff for their support. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmembers Zhuang, followed by Majority Leader Brooks Powers, and then Minority Whip, Palladino, and Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today Councilmember Farrah Lewis and I will introduce the bill intro eleven eighty-six. This bill will require Department of Sanitation to conduct a study regarding the commendations for religious practice that conflict with set out time for garbage. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Farrah Lewis for her sponsorship of this legislation and her partnership on this important issue. As we all know, New York City is melting pot, filled with people from many religious backgrounds. It is part of why New York City is so great. We should respect everyone's religion and their beliefs and customs. Any policy could force a person to go against their own religious practice cannot be a good policy. Current rule in sanitation, garbage must be put out after six P.M. in a bin. It's against some religions. For example, the Jewish community has been limited activities after sundown by their religious observations. In my district, large numbers of Jewish neighbors got tickets from sanitation because of this reason. Forcing people to choose between their religious belief or paying hundreds of dollars in fine is unfair and puts a financial burden for those hard-working families. This is why I'm sponsoring this bill, to get sanitation to conduct a study and look into commendations for different religious groups. Our city should do better to respect all the religions. Again, I would like to thank Councilmember Farrah Lewis for letting me to be a prime co-sponsor of this legislation, and I urge all the Councilmember colleagues to sign on and support this bill. Thank you.
Recognizing Majority Whip, Brooks Powers.
Thank you. Today I'm introducing resolution seven thirty-five, calling on the MTA to conduct a comprehensive, ongoing study on the environmental, economic, and social impacts of congestion pricing throughout New York City. Congestion pricing is a major policy initiative that has already begun to have profound effects on our city. As congestion pricing continues, we must focus on how this policy impacts our city, our entire city, particularly working class and outer borough communities. A robust longitudinal study would allow us to assess the long-term impact of congestion pricing, including traffic displacement, air quality improvements, and economic shifts across neighborhoods. Data-driven policymaking is essential to refining and improving this initiative over time. I urge the Council to support this resolution and call on the MTA to commit to transparency, accountability, and fairness as congestion pricing continues to move forward. Thank you.
Recognizing Minority Whip, Palladino.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today I'm honored to introduce resolution seven three-nine, which urges the state legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation that ensures the children and siblings of sanitation workers who lost their lives as a result of the World Trade Center attack, to receive the same and additional credit on competitive civil service examinations as their families of other first responders. This is a bipartisan effort with strong support from State Assemblyman Sam Berger, as well as my colleagues here in council. Our sanitation workers played a critical role in the aftermath of these attacks, demonstrating the same courage and sacrifice as other first responders. Their families deserve the same recognition and opportunities. By passing this resolution, we reaffirm our commitment to fairness and honor the memory of those who made the ultimate sacrifice. I urge my colleagues to please join me in supporting this important measure. I'd like to add this State Assembly update. This bill was successfully voted out of committee this week. The bill is named after Ignazio Giacalone, who passed away from a nine-eleven-related illness. When this was brought to my attention, it was rather sad to see that they were not, their families were not being treated in the same way, so I'd like you all to please consider this resolution. The families need this support. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens, followed by Kabon, then Carr, Nurse, and Hanif.
Good afternoon. I'm really excited about introducing resolution seven four-four, which calls for the New York State Legislature and the Governor to establish a commission on African-American history and achievements. This commission will ensure that our contributions are not just remembered, but deeply integrated into the education and policies. I want to recognize my colleagues at the state level, Assemblymember Anderson and Jackson, for championing this effort. This bill is about, is more than just policy. It is about preserving our history and protecting our people and securing our future, because if we don't stand together, we will allow others to control our narrative. And so I'm really excited to be introducing this, and again, happy Black History Month.
Recognizing Councilmember Kabon, followed by Carr, then Nurse, and Hanif.
Thank you. Today I'm proud to introduce a resolution with my colleagues, Councilmembers Lynn Shulman and Shahana Hanif, calling to fully fund a mental health solution. We're calling on New York State to increase funding for assertive community treatment teams, or ACT teams, and evidence-based, community-oriented, around-the-clock mental health treatment program. ACT teams are a multidisciplinary group of mental health professionals who provide intensive, community-based treatment and support to individuals with severe and persistent mental illnesses. They offer services directly in homes and communities, often including twenty-four-seven access to support and crisis intervention, and it works. ACT teams help people with severe mental illness become independent and stay in their communities. But ACT teams are currently under-resourced and understaffed. This data-driven solution should be funded and scaled to tackle the magnitude of our mental health crisis, so thank you to both of my cosponsors, and I ask my colleagues in the council to sign on to this resolution for the health and safety of New Yorkers. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Carr, followed by Nurse and Hanif.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to say a couple of words about our now former colleague, Joe Borelli, who left over the last couple of weeks from this body. I met Joe in two thousand and eleven when we were staffers to different elected officials, and the following year he asked me to be the campaign manager of his first bid for office. And Joe set early the tone for the kind of public figure he would be. While we were out campaigning at a grocery store in the South Shore, a voter refused an outstretched palm card from him, and as he was walking away, said in typical Staten Island style, "I don't like politicians." And without skipping a beat, Joe responded, "I don't like you." And here I was, first day on the job, thinking this guy already got me in the middle of a fight. And the voter turned and stretched out his hand and said, "You're real. You got my vote." And Joe, in a moment, turned on its head everything I thought I knew about voter contact and voter engagement, and that's what he continued to do for the rest of his career. He was always true to who he was. He always spoke eloquently with a wit that was both equal parts zinging and endearing. He fought with colleagues across the aisle. He worked with colleagues across the aisle, and he achieved so much in championing his native South Shore and the borough that we both call home. And he found a way to give voice on a scale unprecedented from those beforehand to the concerns and principles of Republicans across the city and even, I would say, the region. And he became a leader in every sense of the word, and I'll certainly miss having him here in the halls of government, but I'm privileged to have him as a friend in life, and I wish him, his wife Rachel, and his two sons nothing but the best as he embarks on his next chapter. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today I'm introducing introduction eleven ninety-one, which refers to the twenty-ten E application, which is how New York City determines supportive housing eligibility. Completing the application can take months, and in the most extreme cases, a year. It requires various documentation, including proof of identity, medication and hospitalization history, proof of homelessness, a psychiatric evaluation, and more. It's a months-long process that does not account for other wait times in the placement process and can act as an administrative burden at best and at worst a deterrent for prospective tenants. To state the obvious, it should not take this long to fill out the supportive housing application, and we should make it as easy as possible to get into supportive housing. This is why I'm introducing intro eleven ninety-one, to evaluate and simplify the twenty-ten E supportive housing application where possible. This bill would require the city to identify which elements of the application are also required by city, state, and federal governments through law, funding agreements, or other regulations, and would eliminate any city-created barriers that prolong the application process. This bill is certainly not a silver bullet and cannot single-handedly cut all the red tape standing in the way of a potential robust housing first program. But I hope and am confident we can eliminate barriers when and where possible to ensure people can get into supportive housing faster. And I want to thank my staff member, Ryan Hickey, who really worked on this for over a year, and I also thank many of the supportive housing advocates and providers who informed on it and helped develop it, and I ask my colleagues to consider it and sign on. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. Today I'm proud to be introducing intro eleven eighty-two, the Tip Theft Prevention Act, with Councilmembers Nurse and De La Rosa. If passed, the legislation would ensure food service workers receive a daily report that details the tips that customers issued to them. These daily reports would be a critical transparency measure that ensures workers receive the money they've earned. This bill originated when workers of a local establishment in my district informed my constituent services team that their boss was stealing tips customers made via credit and debit cards. Upon learning that this issue has been a growing problem industry-wide due to the increased prevalence of digital payment and tipping platforms, we worked with labor organizations, including One Fair Wage and Workers United, to develop this legislation. The Tip Theft Prevention Act also responds to illegal union-busting tactics that Starbucks recently used in New York City. In order to dissuade workers from organizing, they implemented the option for customers to tip by card at all of their non-union stores nationwide, while stripping the option to tip by card at all unionized stores. The tip theft prevention would outlaw this tactic by proactively requiring all businesses that employ tipped workers and accept payment for food and drink via card to also accept tips via card. I encourage my colleagues to sign on as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, recognizing Councilmember Narcisse.
I just have one sentence. Thank you, Majority Leader and Speaker. Intro eleven ninety, we're all always wondering about security, cybersecurity, so look it up and please sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
My pleasure. The stated meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five is hereby adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.